Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Matt Baumgartner, and I have the honor and privilege as serving as the president of the Duluth Area Chamber of Commerce in my hometown. It is the honor of a lifetime to serve in the community that both of my parents raised five kids in and worked in for 40-plus years. I want to be -- she just walked behind the curtain there. The first person I was going to thank was Angie Dorman, and she probably knew I was going to do that, but she's -- she has been with the grandma's company for over 20 years and just does a remarkable job. So I wanted to thank her for the venue and the setup. I also want to thank Martin Dean for getting our audiovisual setup. Thank you very much, Martin. It's been wonderful working with you. And then I wanted to extend the deepest gratitude and appreciation to the Duluth News Tribune for the partnership that we've had for nearly 20 years in doing these candidate forums. Chuck and I co-host them, but also the publisher Neil Ronquist is here with us today. And it is so important that we still publish a local newspaper that is able to -- yes, thank you. That is able to host events like this and publish news and information that's objective, but is also able to lend a voice to opinions in the community. And I think that we need to be mindful that we don't take that for granted, and we do everything we can to support all the platforms that the News Tribune has. So it's wonderful to have the partnership. Welcome to those in attendance as well, whether you're attending on behalf of a candidate for information purposes to -- as a part of the media. Thank you for being here. It is more important now than ever that we are a part of the civic process and that we do it in a way that is authentic to Duluth, that's authentic to the spirit of democracy, and that is accurate for the engagement that we should be able to have in a healthy manner, especially during turbulent times. So a little bit about the format today. We have an hour and 15 minutes. This is for city council at large. Each candidate will have, depending on what the question is, between a minute and a half and a minute. At Chuck and my discretion, we will allow for one-minute rebuttals, and so that is a part of the format as well. And again, just thank you so much to the Duluth News Tribune for the longstanding partnership in being able to provide what is an educational format for our community to be able to make a decision about who they'd like to be represented by in our representative democracy city council. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chuck. Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks for your very kind words, Matt, and we appreciate that News Tribune appreciates our partnership with the chamber as well. It's been a very, very good one. We feel that these forums are an excellent way for the candidates to present themselves. They're also an excellent way for voters to hopefully either attend in person and listen and learn about the candidates so that we can all make informed decisions on November 4th, or if they watch at duluthnewstrubune.com. We will be posting all of the forums there later. As Matt said, this is the first forum this morning is for city council at large. We have Jordan Johnson is here, Derek Medved, incumbent Therese Tomanic, and candidate Asher Estrin-Hare declined. He wasn't able to make it. He cited a work conflict, so he's not here. But we will be asking all the candidates to be writing columns, commentaries about their candidacy, about who they are, about why voters should support them. So with that, I also want to welcome Chris Veriken from our editorial board, and Kathy Burnt is right in front here, candidates. She'll be holding up signs telling you how much time you have left on our timed answers. As Matt said, we'll have one and a half minutes for opening and closing remarks, one-minute answers, and then if there's anything that we feel we need to follow up on, we will direct any sort of rebuttals or any sort of responses. With that, I want to turn it over to the candidates. We'll start with, like I say, opening remarks. Tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're running or running again, and what your priorities would be. We'll start, we'll just go in alphabetical order. We're going to start with Jordan Johnson.
Good morning. My name is Jordan Johnson. I got it, I got it. Hi, good morning. My name is Jordan Johnson. I am delighted to be here. Thank you all for joining me and us. I was born and raised in Duluth. I graduated from Marshall in 1990. I was raised by a single mother, only child, spent many years in New Mexico, 17 years in New Mexico, where I learned how to do a lot of public organizing, public policy work, and advocating for communities with emphasis of lifting up everyone in the community. And so why I'm running and what I can bring forth is I am a civic-engaged leader. I am dedicated to working and working alongside community and business partners and really kind of thinking through what are some innovative, solution-based, action-oriented things we can do together. I believe in working in partnership and in collaboration. It's one of the strengths I bring. I listen, I listen attentively, and I take in all perspectives when making decisions. So I am delighted to be here. You'll hear more about kind of my perspectives and things on the issues that we will be having a conversation about, but you can trust that I'm a transparent and accountable leader who is dedicated to the work for our city and our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Jordan. I should mention, while there are four candidates, it's because there are two open at-large seats, so voters will be voting and electing two candidates. Derek Medved here next.
Good morning, everybody. What a beautiful day in Duluth. Thank you for attending. Thank you for taking the time to listen to each candidate. It's an honor to sit up here again. I know I sat up here back in 2019. Times have definitely changed. A little bit about me, grew up in the western part of town. Of course, people hear a lot about western versus eastern Duluth, but again, I mean, we have one amazing opportunity to learn from each other. We are one long city, 27 miles long, I think, give or take. But the western part of town has taught me a lot about values, about my time growing up. We had the steel plant, we had Atlas Cement, we had a lot of things in that community that people were proud of, and those are my roots, and I'm very proud to bring them to council in the center part of Duluth and show what I've learned. For me, I grew up, like I said, in Gary New Duluth. I actually live in the house I grew up in. A fun story about me for that is my mom always said, growing up, if you want air conditioning, get it when you have your own house. And so now, today, I live in the same house, and I don't have air conditioning, because you understand what it means and the investment it takes and what the priorities require. For me also, I grew up, like I said, in the Gary neighborhood, and I started working at the Malkos when I was 14, and I had later on bought that location and grew that chain from one single location to, we're pushing almost 16, with some employee ownership options. And so we can bring those similarities to council. I believe my budgeting background is what I'm really proud of and what we've accomplished over the years. We have a budget that mirrors, close to the city, I believe, almost $50 million for our organization, and that takes a lot of work, a lot of energy, and I'm willing to bring that to council. My better half Scott is a rancher and a farmer, and of course, that has taught me a lot about patience. And so I think every day I'm learning a lot about patience and what it takes to go out every day, even when you don't want to wake up in the morning and go out to the field and feed the cows and the cattle. And of course, now with harvest coming, patience is going to be a very, very big thing.
Thanks much, Derek. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Time is up, I'm sorry. Our incumbent Therese Tomanic.
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck, and thank you, Matt, for hosting this, and all of you who came to attend. It's really important. I'm so happy for this opportunity today. It is through these types of exchanges that we communicate what the council is working on, and the public gets to know us all better. My qualifications, I've served on council for five years, and I currently serve as the council president. I was unanimously appointed to the council to fill the seat of Barbara Russ in 2020, and I ran for election in 2021. I've served on a multitude of boards and commissions, including the mayor's task force on childcare, the Earn, Stick and Save Time Task Force, and the tourism task force. I currently serve on the Public Utilities Commission, the Parking Commission, the NLX Commission, the Intergovernmental Commission, and have previously served as liaison to parks and libraries and to the police and fire departments. My background is a small business owner and chaplain, lend qualities that are very important to my work. I know how to budget, and I've worked on the city budget for the past five years. Being a chaplain, I also know how to listen deeply and strive to find solutions to constituents' problems and concerns in a timely manner. I've developed a strong working relationship with the mayor and his administration, business leaders, police and fire, nonprofit directors, labor unions, and my constituents. These relationships of mutual respect and cooperation help get the city's work done. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We have nine questions. I'll throw it to Matt for question number one.
Thanks, Chuck. I am an acknowledged finance nerd, and one of the most important functions of the city council is related to the budget. So let's start with city spending and property taxes. The mayor has proposed leaving city hall jobs open to help hold down a tax levy increase next year. How would you or do you plan to advocate for property taxpayers? And how would you describe yourself as fiscally responsible? We'll start with Derek this time, then Therese, and then Jordan. So Derek, you're up first.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes.
For the hold down, I think you said hold down city hall. What was the part?
Yeah, so city spending and property taxes. The mayor's proposed leaving city hall jobs open to help hold down a tax levy increase next year. How would you advocate for property taxpayers? And how are you fiscally responsible?
You know, one thing I've talked about is I believe my background in the convenience store industry is a lot like city business. You know, of course, we have really, really talented frontline workers. We have people behind the scenes that do amazing work, and one thing we need to make sure we're doing is investing within the individuals, boots on the ground, people who make the city function. And I believe that if we have positions open, we got to understand where we need to invest in and where we need to pull back from. But at the end of the day, the tax increases are something we can no longer afford. We can no longer push forward on tax increases, and so we have to work within the means that, you know, regular business owners do every single day, like myself, because we don't have those luxuries of raising prices because we have competition. And I think that's the way I really truly look at the city. We have competition, we have Hermantown, we have Procter, we have Superior, and so we need to remain within our competitive advantage and do what we can with the slice of pie that we have currently.
Thanks, Derek. Therese, you're up next.
Thank you. It's really important that we are fiscally responsible. We have a 7.3 million deficit this year. We have a 0% tax levy this year, and we're looking at a 2.7% levy increase this year. I've been a homeowner with my husband for 43 years. I know that shock of opening that property statement and seeing what's on there. We have to remember that the city is only 29% of that budget, but we still have to be very careful of our spending. It is a very fine balance. To balance what we need to pay for our city commitments, 85% of our budget goes to employees, wages, and benefits. That leaves us a small margin to take everything else into account, capital improvements, everything else that we need to do. We will get that levy down. I'm not sure that it will be 2.7% because we need a little leeway, but this will be through spending cuts, not filling unfulfilled positions, charging credit card fees, and reducing fire overtime, which was $2 million. We're hoping to get that down to $800,000. But people who are on fixed incomes are of primary importance to me, seniors, single moms, families. Thank you.
Thank you, Therese Tomanic. Jordan, over to you.
Yeah, so first, our city is operated by the people who work in our city. So to hold jobs back is a concern to me, in all honesty, because it's what helps us kind of keep our operations going. I understand property taxes, but I, you know, the budget's going to be set by the time we get into the office, and so it's trying to think through, I would kind of pull together finance folks, people from the economics, and pull together a table and think through what are some options, given whatever that budget might look like moving forward. And how I'm fiscally responsible is I have sat on nonprofit governing boards with large budgets. I've ran nonprofit organizations and managed those budgets and lifted those budgets from a 1.2 million to a 3.7 million, not a 50 million, but those are, you know, have been held fiscally responsible in that way. So it's thinking through and creating kind of partnerships and working in partnerships to think through how do we kind of navigate the terrains we're in and kind of moving forward in that way. And I welcome kind of sitting around tables to do that with folks, so.
Thanks, Jordan. We'll stay with the budget and go back to Chuck.
Thank you very much. With the city's budget challenges becoming more and more known, many Duluthians have been advocating for the library specifically. Do you see the library as a core city service? Why or why not? And should it be immune from any budget cuts? Also, why or why not? Councilor Tomanic, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I definitely consider libraries a core city service, and I directly asked the mayor, and he too considers it a core city service. We have to support our downtown library. We have been asking them to perform so many duties. We, the council last year approved a $200,000 acquisition amount that came from the sale of the Sears building. I would like to see them have a bit more for acquisition of digital holdings. When I asked Carla Powers, if you had a clean slate, what would you ask for? And that's one thing she asked for. I thought she'd ask for $2 million, it was $30,000. I also believe that we need to keep our neighborhood libraries open. It is essential that we have the central library, the east library, and the west library, because we need to make it easy for people to get there. And I'm grateful to the library and all their staff who provide computers, information, references, a place for kids, a place for teens to do their homework after school. How could we not fund that?
Thank you very much. Jordan Johnson, the question is about the Duluth library system.
Yeah, so I am in full support of the library and would want to ensure that there is no additional funding cuts to the library. I would really like to think how to bolster our library services, and I know for myself, the library was a place I went when I was a young kid, and we were unstably housed, that kind of I could land and kind of have a place of refuge. I think it's also a learning opportunity for many of our young children with the programs that go on and just kind of thinking through, how do we kind of foster that kind of care for our families who might not necessarily have all the resources? It's a place of education, it's a place of kind of deepening our knowledge and understanding of what it means to be in community, and I fully support the library services and appreciate them being on all sides of our city. So the West Duluth and kind of thinking through in the East Duluth as well, as well as any other local library that we may have within our school. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Derek Medved.
Thank you. So for me, education is one of the greatest pillars in our community. Of course, we look at today, and of course, information is on our phones and our computers, and I find myself often scrolling on Google to find research, is that true or not? You know, try to do my research. And we need to understand that people in our community don't have access to cellphones or laptops or even Wi-Fi. And so for me, education is so darn important. And one idea that I had, and people might say it's impossible, but I'm going to say we've never been in a time like today. Nothing is impossible. And so when we think of ISD 709, how many schools, elementary, middle schools, and high schools are in each individual neighborhood that have libraries, that have access to computers and Wi-Fi and internet? Boggles my mind that taxpayers are expected to pay a part of that pie for a building that sits vacant most of the summer, and we have libraries and resources for students, adults, and people looking to better their education. And so I look forward to focusing on how we can partner with ISD 709 or other partners, higher education, UMD, St. Klasika, Lakespear College, on how we make that a reality, because guess what? There is nothing impossible that we cannot accomplish because we've never been in September 2025 before and the challenges we're facing today. So I look forward to having those conversations because --
Thanks, Derek.
Oh, thank you.
Before I kick back, just thank you very much for your thoughtful answers. Yes or no, real quickly, should the library services be immune from budget cuts? Therese, yes or no? Should I come back to you?
Yeah.
Jordan?
Yes.
And Derek? Should the library be immune from any budget cuts? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. Therese?
That's impossible to answer. I'm a pragmatist. I know that we have to balance the city budget, but I am in full support of the library. So I'm going to say yes with a little caveat on the end.
Thank you very much. Matt?
Noted. We're going to pivot here. So Duluth neighborhoods are being torn up this year to replace lead water lines. How can the city council better meet ongoing infrastructure needs like potholes, aging water and sewer lines, and buckling sidewalks? We'll start with Jordan, then Derek, then Therese.
I appreciate the question. I appreciate the work that's taking place currently in our city in regards to the lead, and I think we have a lot of work ahead. And I think what comes to mind immediately is we are moving through uncertainty and uncertain times and figuring out how to fund those infrastructure projects. And I would really like to think through transportation and sidewalks are critical, like, and the safety of those for accessibility issues is vital. And so I just have to say that that's a really important piece to me, and trying to figure out how we do that in a productive, effective, and time-efficient way is really important. I think of particularly on the west side of Duluth, where I've been out knocking indoors, some of those roads just need to kind of get updated and redone. And it's unfortunate that it's taken so long, and I would like to think through how to do that. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you. And I'm going to backtrack really quick because Therese had a really good response to that libraries question. But council is a lot of homework, a lot of good details go into answers, yes or no, and I wish it was as clean-cut as yes or no. But truly, you have to work really hard to get to the point where you say libraries are immune from budget cuts. Yes, I will do my best. Yes, I will always put my best foot forward for education in our communities, but a lot of homework and a lot of details go into that. So that was my response. I apologize. But for streets and sidewalks and infrastructure, Duluth, I think it's around $573 million of deferred maintenance, if you want to say, give or take, that we have a lot of catching up to do. We're making progress, I believe, every day, every year, on mill and overlays, complete replacements, but below the ground, we touch base on lead water replacement. I serve on the Duluth Public Utility Commission, and there is a lot of darn good work that is being done. And of course, we want clean water. We want Lakes Superior water to make it safely to our homes without, you know, having any plastics or lead additives. And of course, people of Duluth deserve that, and that would not be possible if it wasn't for the federal government and the partnerships the Biden administration put forward. And so we welcome those conversations. We welcome those partnerships, whether it's with the congressional delegation, the state delegation, and even the federal level. We want to make sure that we're building relationships with those individuals to say we have concerns, we have a lot of good work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Therese?
Thank you. Let's start with potholes. We used to repair about two miles of city streets annually due to the fact that the St. Louis corridor, that half percent tax now goes to the city. We can replace 19 miles per year, and it is costly. Lead, we have had huge success. I serve on the Public Utilities Commission. I want to give credit to Jim Bending and Cindy Falconer for carrying out the vision of Eric Schaefer, who was the one that led this fight to get $5 million from the state every year. We started out in Gary New Duluth, and we started with schools and childcare centers, the places that we should replace lead lines first. Then we were in Gary New Duluth, now we're in Central Hillside. We hope to, we have really pushed to get that money from the state as quickly as we can, because we never know what that state budget is going to be, but we hope to get all that money and be able to replace all the lead lines in the cities. Sidewalks, unfortunately, is low priority. That is probably going to mainly fall on the homeowner, because the city just can't afford to replace sidewalks, unfortunately. We have to take a look at that. Maybe the new transportation commission can do that.
Thanks, Therese. I would like to give each of the candidates one more minute here, and I think we spend so much time talking about doing more with less, which is, that's real. Any ideas on how to raise money to do more infrastructure repairs? Raising revenue, something that we don't often talk about. So with that, I'll go in reverse order here, Therese. So I'll start with you, Derek, and then finish with Jordan. So ideas to raise revenue for the city instead of always trying to do more with less when our needs continue to be more?
Thanks, Matt. It all comes down to increasing our economic base. Once we get more corporations, more manufacturing in here, you know, they pay taxes at a higher rate than homeowners. We've got to stop putting it on the backs of homeowners. So it all boils down to economic development, increasing our general fund, and then we would have more money to do street repair. But I do want to say, it has so dramatically increased from years prior, and this year, the maintenance, street maintenance people, were able to fix potholes at an unprecedented rate. And honestly, we had a milder winter, but things are better than they have been. I know if you live on a street with potholes, it doesn't seem like it, but we are working and we are making progress.
Again, I think Therese hit that nail right on the head. Economic development is the lever we need to continue to pull again and again and again and make sure that we're not losing sight of that. And of course, we talk about infrastructure. We've lost sight of that a few too many times, in my opinion, and we need to make sure that we do not take our foot off the gas pedal. We need to make sure we're continuing to take care of the infrastructure we have, and it will prolong the life, I believe, tenfold. But again, we need to make sure we have a clear path. But first and foremost, economic development is what we really need to focus on to grow the pie and to grow the tax base. Thank you.
Thanks. Jordan?
I appreciate the opportunity to kind of think through the abundance that exists in our community and in our state and in our nation. And so, one, I think if we are inviting economic developers or people who are developing in our community, there has to be an investment in the social fabric of our community, which includes the infrastructure within our community. And so what that exactly looks like, I'm not sure, but I'm invested in trying to figure out what we can do to kind of make sure that that happens. I also think we could look at what other cities are doing or other places throughout the nation had done to kind of help support and generate revenue in a particular way to help support the infrastructure kind of aspects in communities. I know TIF funds are historically used around Minnesota housing, but in other cities and places, they have used TIF funds as become, and it's something we have to work with the state around area, creating areas. So those areas funding could help support some kind of money or kind of thinking through kind of supporting the kind of infrastructure. But the revenue piece is around creatively coming together to think how we generate that revenue differently.
Thanks, Jordan. Chuck?
Thanks, councilors. The city council and the Duluth tenants' union don't see eye to eye on repairing rental units in Duluth. And of course, we're going to have an entire forum on that tomorrow, so I will not ask you to follow for any follow-up questions on this one, but, and of course, voters will get a chance to weigh in via a ballot question on November 4th. So Derek, we'll start with you. What is your position on the so-called Right to Repair Initiative? And then we'll go to Councilor Tomanic and then Jordan Johnson. Derek?
So of course, I will say, and I've said this publicly before, is I think those individuals have done a phenomenal job of being organized, have had their message clear. They've gone out because they know something is wrong, and truly, there is. Life safety is something that we need to bolster. We need to push forward and make sure that we're investing in life safety, having boots on the ground, and holding landlords accountable. Of course, just like business, a landlord should be held to a certain standard, and I don't believe that's happening. And so those individuals have a legitimate request, and I give them so much credit for getting it on the ballot and letting Duluth decide, because it has gotten this bad that they're finally taking action and moving forward. But I truly believe that this is the function of the city, life safety, and of course, landlords need to be held accountable, and if we're not doing that, the problem will continue. And so find the landlord until they cannot be fined no more, and if that is the case, they should not be in the business. And we need good quality housing in Duluth, but I truly believe that, right, the voter will decide, and that, I think, is the beautiful thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Therese?
Thank you for the question. I too want to thank the organizers for bringing this to light. It's an incredibly important topic, and we need to cover it. I've had many meetings with Life Safety and John Otis. They have assured us that they have the capacity to handle the complaints that were so backlogged during COVID-19. The council added a housing inspector to that end. The council also passed two ordinances recently. The first is a really important one, and that requires each landlord to give leases a list of resources when they sign their lease. And then the second one tightens up the timeline to fix any repairs that the tenants have concerns about. There are going to be additional requirements for licensing. We have bolstered inspections and enforcement, landlord education. There are increased penalties for noncompliance and violation. We want to make sure that all landlords are good landlords, and the majority of the landlords in our city are. We want to have, the problems that I've seen are that the tenants, we don't want them to be held responsible if those repairs go awry.
Thank you, Therese. Jordan Johnson?
Yeah, so I appreciate you bringing this up forward, bringing it forward. I've been a lifelong tenant. I appreciate all the work the organizers have done, kind of being out. I appreciate all the work the organizers have done, kind of being out, talking to folks, kind of lifting up the issue. I recognize that we need, we need to protect our renters. It's vital that our renters are cared for and protected and are living in safe, secure environments. There's multiple kinds of landlords that exist in our city. I just want to say that. It's not one kind. We have a multitude of kind of different kind of landlords. And some that have been there for a long time and we have an old housing stock where many of those people are living in these kind of, um, buildings or houses that have not been updated or upgraded. And so I think we can, we need to hold our landlords accountable. I think it's vital that we think through how do we support our renters and kind of the right, like thinking through the right to repair, but make sure that they are protected in case anything should happen. And also just kind of thinking, how do we work in partnership moving forward to kind of move forward and hold, you know, there's ordinances in place. But how do we build upon those ordinances to ensure that everyone in our area is cared for in their homes?
Thanks much. Matt?
Thanks, Chuck. Downtown. Like downtowns across the country, especially since the pandemic, we know that they are changing. Yet our downtown should not just be okay with the status quo. What is your vision for downtown and how do you propose getting us there? We're going to start with Therese, Jordan, and then Derek. Therese?
Thank you, Matt. I'm really looking forward to the, um, study. We've hired, uh, MIG study planners and designers that will come up with a plan for downtown. It builds on the work that's already done for Imagine 2035 and Imagine Canal Park. We, we need to have more housing downtown so that we, number one, provide housing that's so desperately needed in our city. And number two, so that we don't have empty buildings sitting there. I want to commend Brian Forseer, who this Friday will have the opening of Forest on Fifth. I've been down there to look at it. It will be short-term rentals, not, not like overnight rentals. So they do have a little bit of a hotel structure now until they can get those three, six, nine month, uh, leases. Because that's what we hear. People move to Duluth and they can't find housing. They can't find childcare, so they are not able to stay. George Goldfarb is back as Marissa, so that's going to help with economic development. We need to improve the safety that connects our heart district and Canal Park. We want a well-designed and unified downtown that people want to go to. Thank you.
Jordan?
Yep. Um, so there, yes, I appreciate the study happening and there is this emphasis to put in residential sites in downtown area. I think around, uh, 500 to 1500 at the time. I live downtown. I'm a downtown resident. That's my neighborhood. And so for me, I think around, how do we kind of create a culture of care in our downtown area? Because there are concerns around public safety, I think that come up for folks. Our service district is in that area as well. And so I care for the community members who are walking and in the area. But the more we get people out, moving in the community and in the area, it shifts the, the environment and shifts the kind of culture that downtown has. There's a lot of opportunities to have, you know, I have a vision of like downtown being the connector of like Canal Park, going through Lincoln Park, or you could go out to the art district towards Zikeis. And so is there a way we can create that as a connector for all the other districts and areas? So we have a comprehensive plan throughout the city. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. And Derek?
Thank you. Uh, you know, I'll take the words of Zach Filipovich, you know, that I've heard many times on councils. The greenest building is already standing and that is very true for downtown. Uh, we have a lot of great assets downtown, uh, but what is, uh, what is the use? Is it going to be housing? Will it be attracting new organizations, a startup for a business? I think what, uh, Lincoln Park has turned into is phenomenal. And for, for our organization being in the thick of it, understanding of truly what can happen if you get really good people, uh, business owners, entrepreneurs, uh, to run free. To kind of have that freedom to make choices and to dig a little deeper. And that's what we need in downtown. Uh, we talk about safety. Of course, things should be, uh, safe in downtown. We have the DTA hub down there where officers are, uh, located most of the time. We will probably get into it, uh, the unhoused population. And of course you hear that many times and that is one big thing that we need to discuss, I believe all of us today, uh, is what is our plan for homelessness? And, and we need to make sure we're taking care of those individuals first and foremost, uh, and getting them the resources and housing they deserve. Uh, and then talking about the plans for downtown, but I think it goes hand in hand and it's not just one, uh, one size or one answer fits all.
Thanks, Derek. I'd like to go back to the candidates quickly here. Those were great thoughts about downtown, but one more run through on a big vision for downtown. What, what is that? What, what is the, the, uh, the emerald in the sky for downtown? And we'll go in reverse order here. So Derek, I'm going to start with you and then Jordan and then Therese. Give us your vision for downtown.
Well, I'm sure many of you might remember glass block. Uh, of course, my grandma and my mom always talked about that for, for many years. Uh, and where did we go wrong? Uh, again, I think there was decisions made on previous, this is probably the long answer. But, uh, there was decisions that were made to bring things over the hill. Uh, we lost a lot of shops downtown. And how do we reverse that? How do we take a little bit of Herman Town or, uh, the mall district and bring that back? Because we have a lot of, we have the view. They don't. And I think that's the beautiful thing. And so how do we revamp that and understand how to bring retail back? Again, a mix of housing, but I think it's going to take many and many, uh, bullet points of housing and development and retail. Of course, it's unfortunate to see Wells Fargo leaving, uh, but again, it just opens up the door for additional space, uh, that can be used for the question mark. What is it going to be? And so that's my vision. I think it's a, a mixed use, but it's people, getting people back downtown.
Thanks, Derek. Um, let's see. Jordan?
My vision is that it's like the place people want to go and come to and be. And so I think there is an opportunity for really small businesses, small, you know, upcoming entrepreneurs. You have to think around the zoning of those buildings because they're primarily for business. They're not for residential at this time. And so what does that look like for us moving forward? But I think it could be, it's a place where you want to kind of walk and you can think around the streets and what that looks like. And there's a historic aspect to our downtown. Some of those buildings have a rich history that we can think through. How do we elevate that history in our community? I think of Clayton Jackson McGee area and like, what does that look like around our African heritage community? Our, um, our indigenous communities and the gift shop that, um, ACO has. And so what is it that we as a community, and maybe this is a broader conversation for our community at large of like, what do we envision downtown? Cause I remember when it was robust and I see those pictures of my family and working downtown and my dad. That can happen, like that's possible. So I would love to see those streets filled again.
Thanks, Jordan. Therese?
Thank you, Matt. I think we need to look at Duluth as a place where people could live and work. And that would be a neighborhood, neighborhood unto itself. For that, we need housing. We need restaurants. We need hotels because we need that tourism income. And we want visitors to feel welcome and we want it to be beautiful. We need entertainment. I'm so grateful. We have the North Shore. Every time there's a player, a concert, it's busy. We need small businesses and we need a grocery store and we need a drugstore. Because those are the things that people need in their, uh, neighborhoods. I think of Lakeview 333. They're talking about retail in the bottom floor. I've been pushing for a certain type of grocery store. I don't know if you'll get it. Arts, the music, it, it would be lovely to have small museums downtown. I think of the Miracle Mile in Chicago where when you walk down there, there's retail, but then there's a little, little museum. And then there's a place where they have a little concert. So we, we do have that with the arts moving to the First Bank. It's lovely to have them there, the Art Institute. So I think it's a vision that when it all comes together, it's going to work really well.
Thanks, Therese. Chuck?
Thank you very much. Uh, related to downtown, it, it's difficult to talk about downtown without discussing crime, public safety. I appreciate that, uh, that that came up in our previous question, but let's dig a little bit deeper. How can the city led by the city council do a better job of ensuring that residents and visitors are not only safe, but that they feel safe? And not just downtown, but citywide. Uh, Jordan, we'll start with you.
So I appreciate the, the question and community safety is one of my, uh, priority areas. And I think, um, public safety is often kind of targeted towards downtown, but we all want to feel safe in our community. And people who are unhoused want to feel safe as well. And I go, it goes back to the vision. When you have more people on the streets of downtown or out and about and moving around and strolling around, it creates a different feeling than a scarcity mentality. And when we have a abundance mentality in downtown, that shifts the environment and that shifts how people feel. I also think that, um, we need to look at local gun safety policies, if I'm going to be honest. We've had too many people who have died, whether it's domestic violence or circumstances that have arisen around guns. And we need to kind of take into consideration seriously what that looks like in our community. I think there's also areas where lighting, it makes a difference in regards to feeling safe or people wanting to feel safe. And it goes back down to transportation and the sidewalks. If you're safe on the sidewalk, you're not worrying about, um, other areas of concern. So thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you. Uh, you know, I will never say that I'm a public safety expert, uh, but of course I do know that we have phenomenal individuals in our public safety, police and fire. Uh, and, and truly when we think of, uh, councillor Tamanic, uh, brought up the fact that, uh, the fire department has insane amounts of overtime and of course that cuts further into the budget. And so we have a shortage of police and fire, uh, individuals. And, and what does that say about us? Something is not working. And so what does that look like? You know, of course we want tourism, uh, to understand that we have good quality public safety. We want our residents to understand that. We want them to pick up the phone, whether it's a noise complaint, whether it's a truly, uh, dangerous, uh, call. Them to get a response. We don't want them to wait 10, 20, 30 minutes. But we have a lot of work to do on that. And so first and foremost, I believe it is focusing on the departments themselves. Understanding how we hire and retain, back to the competition, Herman Town, the county, Superior. Uh, we have individuals leaving for Bloomington, uh, just I think this past week, uh, left the city. And so something is wrong, something is not working, uh, that we need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. Therese?
Thank you so much. Uh, the city council has done a number of things to help begin that process of, of safety downtown. Uh, the police department has increased the number of community service officers. We have found that when these young men and women patrol the skyway, that things settle down and it's safer. The council also voted a pay raise for the police officers so we can have our choice of quality officers coming into our city. We also during COVID voted to increase the training budget for the Duluth Police Department. Hugely important that they are trained in de-escalation, that they have the most, uh, up-to-date training available. And Mike Sanoa, Chief Sanoa does a great job on make sure, making sure that all of our officers are thoroughly trained in peacekeeping. We also have done a study of the skyway. It's difficult to maintain the safety in the skyway and the safety on the streets. That is a challenge because there is so much, um, length that has to be patrolled. So we're studying the skyway. How can we use that most effectively? And keep both areas safer pedestrians and people who want to live and work down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Thanks, Chuck. Let's talk about economic development and how we encourage economic development, incentivize economic development and ensure that it's done responsibly. Something this city has been criticized for at times is its use of TIF. And yet we know that, uh, in aggregate, it is underutilized compared to other cities. Additionally, sometimes the way that we support developers and businesses don't turn out in the way that we had envisioned or liked. How can the city council ensure city resources are used responsibly? And how do we incentivize economic development? Derek, we'll start with you.
So on, on the point of TIF, Duluth is about 3.4%, uh, I think, you know, on the national average, uh, where other municipalities are around four to 10. Of course, I think we're doing pretty well, but it is not the lever. It is not the tool in the toolbox we need to continue using. I think that's for a special occasion. We look at the paper mill. I think a phenomenal, phenomenal product, uh, prod, product of a project, uh, that we got to cross the finish line. Uh, and, and that is truly what I believe TIF is used for. Of course, we talk about housing, uh, and housing is, is one thing that needs, uh, a lot of discussion further, but TIF should not be the tool that we use for housing. Uh, and of course, um, we need to make sure that we're holding the line and being very firm and unified on the use of TIF, uh, for council and the administration. Where it's not an, an expected, uh, offering, uh, it's a discussion further, a more thoughtful discussion. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Therese?
Thank you. Um, as far as economic development goes, our planning and economic department is really working on this. They are doing an overhaul of the UDC. So there's not one rule for this part of the city and another rule for this part and one rule for this part. So they recently gave a presentation for council. You can find that online. And that will give you an overview of the changes that are being made. TIF got a lot of attention when we had, uh, a failed project on the Incline Village. I want to make sure that people know we, the city did not lose one dime. We did not pay out any money to that developer. And so, uh, we did not lose that. We're still hoping for a development up there. TIF is important that we need to get utilities to certain areas. It's incredibly expensive to build a mile and bring in water and sewage and, um, the electricity and, um, the internet. So that needs to be used wisely to encourage developers. You don't have to pay for all of this. You have to worry about your development. And we have to encourage the developer, developers that yes, we want you here. We need housing. We need buildings.
Thanks, Therese. Yep. And Jordan?
Yeah. So I think of what, what would be the incentive for economic development to come to our area? And I think about, you know, um, what are potential other ways we can help support that? You know, is there municipal bonds that we could think about? You know, what is the, what do we kind of decide around the negotiating table? Um, when having those conversations with a developer, not only developers, there's investors behind the developers. So who are the investors that we need to be having the conversations with? And how can we potentially maybe fast track some situations where people are making investments into the social fabric of our community? Right? So is there a way we can do that? And I know there are people who help design plans that's really driven by the community. So not only do you have the economic developers that are the developers, the investors, but you have community investment. And so those are the things I think we can think about in regards to kind of moving forward.
Thanks, Jordan. Chuck, if I may, I've got a quick follow-up on economic development. Thanks. Um, when we think about economic development and the investors and the, the financial stack needing a return on their investment. If you can, by investing in treasuries, earn 6% risk-free. And with a lot of risk, at the end of the day, a developer may get a 6% return after they sell their last unit. Just using that scenario, how do we incentivize that developer? Why is Duluth the right place to invest? And I'll go backwards here. Jordan, uh, you're first.
There are a lot of people who want to come to our Duluth. And so I think people want to, I think of climate change or what's kind, what's coming in regards to kind of climate resiliency. I think it's a beautiful area in regards to outdoor kind of adventures and in that way. And so, and I'm not the tax person or in this, but I would work and think through like, those are some options of, to consider. Like what's attractive Duluth? You know, what, what's the opportunity that we have here? And we have a lot of opportunities. I just have to, even when it feels like despair and scarcity, there is an immense amount of possibility in our city and that's the perspective we need to kind of be bringing forward. Going back to your question around the vision, what does that look like? So yes, is there a way we can do that where there is a kind of, um, incentive in regards to the units and kind of investment coming back in a different way? I would love to think through that with people who are much more versed in kind of economics and finances than me. But I'm open to those conversations. Thanks, Jordan. Uh, Therese?
Thank you. Um, first I think we have to be hopeful that the interest rates come down because I think that's been one hindrance to developers across the country is the really high interest rate. And we're hopeful that that will change. There are investors that just really, really love Duluth and have a heart for Duluth. So we're grateful for them. Also Duluth has an underdeveloped potential. Think about if another development goes up in Chicago, like, oh, who notices, you know? But when a Lakeview 333 goes up downtown and we have 230 more units that can house medical providers. You know, we, we get providers coming in and they may or may not stay depending on whether they can get housing. But if they can get an apartment and stay in Duluth, that's very helpful for economic development. And we make a big deal out of that. We celebrate that. So it's really important for interest rates. We have a dedicated labor workforce. We have project labor agreements that make sure that projects get done on time and that our workers are safe. All of those things are very important to economic development.
Thanks, Therese. And Derek, we'll wrap up with you.
Thank you. You know, and I believe, you know, uh, to Matt's point is developers are not focused on how they feel about Duluth. Uh, of course they might like it, it might have a great view, but they're focused on the numbers. And of course that's their job and we appreciate them for that. Uh, so they need to make an educated decision. Uh, and, and who is it, right? It is a business decision to focus on Duluth, Superior, Esco or Herman Town. And so how do we make sure we're positioning ourselves to be the most attractive, uh, you know, individual or city? And so that means focusing on our competition, understanding what they're doing. Cut back on the red tape where as needed, because let me, let me tell you, Duluth does have a lot of red tape. And as Therese had said, uh, they are focusing a lot on being equal across the board. And that's what we need to do. We need to make sure we're, we're treating every- We need to make sure we're treating every development the same. There's no special treatment, but the red tape has got to go. It is a big problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Chuck? Thanks, Matt. Our next question is about homelessness, the site of encampments on our hillside, the controversy over Vineyard Church welcoming unhoused living out of their cars. Both of those things and other things show that Duluth, like many cities, we have a real challenge here. What are we doing that's working? Let's try to talk about some positives, and what more can we do? Where should we be putting our resources? Therese Tamanik, we'll start with you.
Thank you. First, I want to talk about the Vineyard and Safe Bay. That is a very successful program. I know it's been a little bit hard on the neighbors, but we have people that are working to make it work out really well. People come in, they park their car, they have access to services and hygiene. And then they often leave in the morning to go to work. So they just need a leg up until they can get in more permanent housing. We have an exciting thing coming up. Chum is moving to Damiano this week, as a matter of fact. That will happen on Thursday. And it is bigger, it is newer, it will provide a lot of services. Well, Chum does their remodel, and they are expanding so that they can house so many more people to give them a dignified, safe place to live at night. As far as the encampments, we have, I don't think we have as many as we have had in years past. We try to get out with the Clean and Safe Team. Nate has been a miracle worker on connecting with people and getting them services that they need. So that's very helpful. Thank you.
Jordan, a question on homelessness, on what's working and what more can Duluth be doing?
Yeah, so I think the workaround stepping on up and their kind of visions for a short-term and long-term visions is something to kind of look at. I think the kind of movement around Union Gospel and to the kind of, or into the government, closer to the government services is a really nice partnership with the county, the city, and kind of our local nonprofit leaders. I think there's also, which you might not know about, is there's a direct service, direct cash service project, pilot project happening in St. Louis County, where young people are getting $1,000 in hand. And part of a research study to keep them out, it's a pathway out of homelessness. So if we focus on running young people not entering into homelessness, we help reduce the kind of concerns that are facing our community. So that's happening, and we should hear that study in the near future. I think we also kind of have to think around harm reduction housing. What might that look like, and how can the city help support that? And so there's a lot of opportunities ahead in regards to thinking through, how do we kind of lift up our community members who might be struggling with housing?
Good. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you. During my time in council, the crisis response team was a main focal point. Of course, during COVID, we used some of those funds to get that organized. I supported it on council and off council when the city was making the hard decisions to sunset that program. But the county did pick up the baton, and they're running with it, which I'm very darn proud of. We need to make sure we're focusing on mental health first and foremost. You know, I believe they go hand in hand. And of course, the city has already allocated millions of dollars to partnerships. We need to lean in further to those partnerships, but also never lose sight of the fact addiction and mental health. And that is something I'm very proud of and very passionate about. I will make sure I'm dedicating a significant amount of time to understanding that. As for the housing aspect, you know, we never have too many beds, right? Chum is overflowing, a lot of the facilities. And one thing that is very telling, and again, it's not to throw anybody under the bus, but when I was on council, we had Central High School sitting vacant, heated over the hill. And I made a call and said, hey, here's a perfect example of a space that can be utilized. Did it happen? Absolutely not. And so why are the taxpayers paying for facilities that are heated, that we can house people, that we may not use? And it was torn down, of course, a couple of years ago. But those are instances, and we even look at City Hall.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Matt?
Thanks, Chuck. Early childcare and education, big challenge. It's a challenge for our business community, it's a challenge for families, it's a challenge for outcomes for our kids. What more can the city council do to ensure that childcare options here are readily available and affordable? We'll start with Jordan on this one, then Derek, then Therese.
I think it's a great question. And I think there is some conversations in our community happening in regards to what it might, how to make childcare affordable and what that might look like. And what comes to mind is I was in New Brighton at a community center there, and they had this really robust childcare center. The library was there, and they had a fitness center there. And then they had all these other services within that one building. And I was like, how do we do something like that? That's accessible and affordable and that that can happen? I know there's conversations around housing development for elders with childcare underneath. That is one thing that's in the works. But our young people, again, deserve to have a place where they kind of go and be a part of and figure out how to kind of enhance their learning opportunities. Our third and fourth graders are really struggling with their kind of learning and reading skills at this time, from my understanding. And so I would really love to think through how to kind of support our young people because that's our future generation. We start there. Our whole, they are our future leaders in our community.
Thank you, Jordan. Derek?
And again, I'll circle back to the city has done some good work on zoning. There needs to be a lot of creative zoning around this conversation because, you know, growing up for me, I went down the block, and there was a childcare center for me. That's no longer that you have the in-house childcare centers because of the red tape. And I believe we need to focus on that zoning creatively and also working with individuals to bolster childcare and early development. Because I believe it is not a friendly approach, what we're doing currently. And so those are the two, I think, main bullet points that we need to focus on.
Thanks, Derek. Therese?
Thank you. I think it's really important that we cooperate with the state. There was a large gathering of childcare providers, elected officials, and parents on Saturday up in Hermantown at the YMCA. Grant Housechild was there, Representative Pete Johnson was there. We need to get state support in helping childcare centers be profitable and to pay the employees a really livable wage. It's a mixed blessing that the governor is looking at adding spots in the school system. He added 75 spots for, 75 schools, pardon me, to the program that would allow for a third and four-year-olds to be educated in the school system. The schools are adding programs too. I know Marshall School has a program for three and four-year-olds and as does Hartley. But what that does is it takes away paying spots for the childcare providers, the home providers and the independent providers. I want to give credit to Ascenda that is adding 110 spaces. When the Brave View project goes up, the senior housing, it is a really complex issue. And we continue to work on that because we know we have to have childcare and housing in order to have economic growth.
Thank you, Therese. And it is a very complex issue. Thank you, candidates, for a wonderful job. Appreciate it. We've come to the time where we can have closing remarks. But before that, I just want to thank you all for being willing to step into the arena of public service. I know we'll give them all a round of applause afterwards. But I think now more than ever, the people who are brave enough to step into public service, even running for office, deserve to be commended. So thank you for that. For closing remarks, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, please urge people to vote. This can be watched on the Duluth News Tribune's website. It can be shared. Get the word out about candidates so they can make an educated decision. But more than anything, let's get people out voting. Having 10,000 or 12,000 people vote when we have 55,000 people who can vote is just not doing good enough. So please encourage people to vote on November 4th or sooner with early voting. So closing remarks of a minute and a half. We'll start with Derek and then Council Tamanik, and then Jordan. So Derek, please.
Thank you, everyone, for taking the time today. One thing that I thought of last night is how I wanted to close. And of course, people don't remember what you say, but they remember how you make, you made them feel. And so I always want to stick to that. But I wrote down choices, hope, and hard work. We have a lot of choices. We have some good choices we have to make, and we have a lot of hard choices we have to make. I'm willing to step up to make and do the homework, the good work that has to be done. We're not going to agree all the time, but I welcome that. And one thing somebody told me one time is, your yard sign will stay up as long as I agree with you. I said, no, 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 no. Please call me, day or night, I don't care what it is, because you are the individual that is going to hold me accountable. My phone is on, my email, you know, I get too, you know, a little late sometimes, but my phone is always on. And so that is the beauty of it. Hold elected officials accountable. Persist, push further, you know? And make sure that we're answering our phones, answering questions. Hope, that's our job, right? As an elected official, if on council, we need to push hope. Even though there's concerning tax increases, budget deficits, we always need to remember that there is hope. Because generations have done it time and time before us. My better half, his grandma, talks about the Great Depression, growing up during those times. And they kept hope. You know, I don't want to say it was a simple time, but they always made sure they focused on moving forward. And hard work. There's a lot of good hard work left to do. And so I look forward to doing that with you guys, with elected officials, and focusing on the details. And so I believe with those three things, we can make a lot happen. Thank you, guys, and remember to vote.
Thanks, Derek. Therese?
Thank you, Matt. I want to thank the DNT and Chamber for hosting this forum with my fellow candidates and all of you who attended today. The choice of your representatives on the council is an important one. And this opportunity to address our pressing city issues allows you, the voters, to make informed choices in the upcoming general election on November 4th. My life experience as a business owner, homeowner, healthcare worker, and chaplain, as well as my five years on the council, allow me to serve this city with a deep listening skills and an attitude of pragmatism with a heart. My top three, excuse me, priorities for the coming four years are vibrant neighborhoods, the city budget, and community safety. For an expanded view of those, you can go to my website, votetheresa.com. But let me just say, vibrant neighborhoods includes fixing potholes and repairing our streets, safe parks and green spaces, welcoming and enriching libraries. City budget, we all talk about that. Our balanced spending with priorities for families with children, seniors, and those living on a fixed income. Support our essential city services and budget support for libraries and parks. Strategic budgeting to minimize tax increases. Community safety, continue to work on the Public Utility Commission to replace the lead lines. Support the providers of police, light, fire, and life safety, and support for the Community Crisis Response Team. We will have city funding included in that for next year. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Therese. Yep. Thank you very much. Jordan?
Again, thank you to the Duluth Chamber and the Duluth Tribune. And thank you all. Really, it's about you. You know, I have dedicated my life to speaking up and standing alongside community members. That's what I've done. And as somebody who's running for office, it's about being a public service. And so I believe in investing in everybody, and I believe in the power of the people. And I believe that we can shift and change our neighborhoods to be what we want them to be. It's also about protecting our workforce. It's about caring for our unions. It's about caring for our LGBTQ members. It's about caring for our young people who are struggling in schools. It's working in partnership with our other elected officials, whether it's school board members, county members, and you leaders in our community. That's what I bring. I bring a sense of possibility. I bring a sense of deep, deep care for a city that taught me my values and how to hold true to who I am and my integrity. It's about being transparent and accountable. And that's what I will do as an elected official. I want to see our community embrace this kind of sense of belonging. And when you come to Duluth, we say, welcome to Duluth. There's a lot of new people in our community that are, we are welcoming in, and we're going to welcome many more. And that's my job as a city councilor. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jordan. And thank you, everybody, for such a civil forum. And again, if we could, just thank everybody up here for their willingness to step up